Next up is our open forum public comment. We have several people that signed up this evening. I'll call now as we go, but we will start with Lori Littman. Please approach the podium. Make sure you use the mic so we can all hear you. And make sure you give us your name and address directly.
My name is Lori Littman. I live at four sixteen East Sixth Avenue, and I have lived here for thirty-five years. I'm here tonight to advocate for the extension of the sidewalk for about four blocks from the intersection of the East Sixth Avenue and Lake Street, West Main Street. The sidewalk currently extends from west on East Sixth Avenue and completely stops at Lake Street. I have resided here long enough to see dozens of bicyclists and now more and more scooters and, of course, pedestrians attempt to continue the four-block distance to Main Street and the downtown area over dicks, bums, roofs, and partially covered rocks while still attempting to keep their balance over bikes and scooters and staying out of traffic. They will often and dangerously ride down a white line along East Sixth Avenue while traffic comes within inches of hitting them. Computers along East Sixth Avenue now include a steady stream of semis, gum trucks, concrete mixers, fully loaded car transport vehicles, and autos with distracted drivers who openly and without concern text or talk on their cellphones while paying little attention to others around them. The huge trucks take up the entire length of a small two-minute narrow road. I felt like I should no longer remain silent with what I was seeing. Most bicyclists are young people with backpacks who seem to have no idea of the danger around them, and I feel like it's the town's responsibility to provide a safe environment for them. I've communicated with Mr. Smith and Mayor O'Brien about this issue. Mr. Smith advised me that it was considered once previously, but the town council rejected it. Why? It's unscrupulous that the town council would approve two completed both Oakdale Street and the nasty that will not approve the sidewalk. Oakdale Street, perhaps a tiny fraction, a tiny fraction, tiny, tiny fraction of the dangerous traffic that is standing along Sixth Avenue. Mr. Smith also indicated that if you're using a five-hundred-block project near completion, and Mayor O'Brien advised me to speak to the town council. So that's why I'm here, speaking to both, to advocate. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. Here's to advocating for continuation of the sidewalk through the intersection of Lake Street and Sixth Avenue, West Main Street, for three reasons. One, most importantly, these young folks need to be protected. I cannot overstate the dangers for them that I see constantly in my own space East Sixth Avenue, so I see them all the time. It's simply, number two, it's simply the right thing to do for the health's good. It's a safety measure that is long-kept stew, and now's the perfect time to do it. And my third reason, as the five-hundred-block project near completion...
You can say that.
Oh, okay, thank you. What does that mean? As the five-hundred-block near completion, the sidewalk would be a much bloodier entrance into the downtown area and would encourage more bicycle and foot traffic to patronize any new vendors that inhabit the five-hundred-block commercial area. So I ask that you reconsider and approve this request. And thank you so much for letting me deliver my comments.
Thank you for coming to share with the entire council. We've had the opportunity to communicate with it.
Yes.
We made a little positive steps, but also we've got more work to do. So, I mean, perhaps we can, and John, we look, we've had all the work done. I think it was, it was, it was, there was some resistance. I think maybe that resistance isn't the same now, so maybe you can finish that, check it out.
Yes, sir.
Next up is Ms. Stella River.
I'm working sixty on my second hand, sixty-two years, and I've served on the council, so I know how hard that job can be. Now, we're talking about boat houses, and I've just been on the market, Jennifer. But if you read the book called National Battle, when you're on the lakes, they just one oh two, one oh three, one oh four. It gives you the history of those boat houses. And it's pretty evident that they've just been passed with plank deeds. They've never owned the land. Back about thirty years ago, I found this in some town council meetings. But somebody came, some different people have lived here, and wanted permission to build boat houses. It was even thirty, forty years ago. And the council at the time gave them the permission to build them, but made them agree that if another council came along and were to be torn down, they would do it. They would welcome to take the lumber from the buildings or whatever, but they were not going to be left. Well, different councils come in and different things happen. But there's been many councils familiar with this ownership. Realtors have been using boat houses as a selling tool, knowing that the fact that they have never had a deed and never owned anything. They've been passing quick plank deeds. And if you go and look up what a deed is, then you should have had a title deed. You know, the quick plank deed is not, you don't own that. It's totally different. About the last two times that I remember this coming up, and the last time that I remember is twenty fifteen years ago, the council decided to lease the property to the people and who air occupied them at the time. And they gave the lease for like fifteen years for pennies, so cheap. But at the lease, it said, if you want to stay on the lease, you have two months before the lease is over to notify the council of the town that you're going to renew the lease. Well, they never did that. But that council went ahead and renewed the lease with pennies per year. And so here we are today. If they want to continue the lease signing, if not, they should leave and let somebody else lease them. You know, you can put them out as long as it's somebody that lives in the town and lease them. But if they want to continue, then they should be signing another lease with a certain, certain amount of money. And then they can stay or they can leave. But they don't own them. They now have them, and they know they don't own them. And you go back, Karl Packer's history, I'm sorry, in that book, it really goes through very clearly what you're dealing with again tonight. So you got to have a council that just says, this is it. You either lease them or you get out. But stop doing this every few years. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your service. That makes my day's job.
Thank you. Next up is Hannah Douglas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Douglas, and I'm living in ten thousand official, New York, in Florida. I've been a teacher for over twenty-five years in our state of D.C. I'm running for school board in District Four, which is actually a college high school, a women's high school, west, west, uh, rising west, west of the high school area. And the reason why I'm here to run is because the school system is really heavy, but with teachers and medical professions. I've almost never seen that before. Living at the beginning of the year, the beginning of the year, just dropping everything and just, no, leave them. They're a game, man. So I decided that I want to be part of the solution. I want to be to bring my perspective as a teacher to, at the school board level, to position, to make, to find ideas, to find solutions to the school system. It's really hard work and tragic to see that our students are in the classroom with our teachers, and they have stuff to follow them on. And that's a very sad situation. So that's the reason why we're here today. With my experience, maybe here over thirty years, and twenty-five years as a teacher, I can make a difference in our school system. Thank you so much for being with me, and I'm so happy to get to meet you tonight and have a good day. So much for being here today.
From the, we thank you for running, and thank you for your providing the community service. Certain teachers have one of the toughest and most important jobs for all of our, for our entire community, all of our students. And never have I seen so many parents put their way to do a good job. So thank you for your money and paying the time to host us. Next up is Ms. Pam Markey.
Good evening. Pam Markey, sixty-seven original drive for about twenty-seven years. I'm just here to talk to council tonight about Military Appreciation Month, which may is Military Appreciation Month. You can see we've got our flags up around town and also to invite council to come out this Saturday, May eighteenth, at ten a.m. Here at Town Hall, invite everyone to come out for our third annual Armed Forces State Celebration. This year, we're proud to celebrate ten active duty members of children, grandchildren, residents of the town of Woodmere. And we've got our banners up around town as well. We actually have a native event on the banners, so everybody knows when to come out. So hopefully, it's gonna help a little bit for people coming out this year to celebrate. One of the things we're excited about doing this year, not only about getting an update, you have our town, our ten active duty service members that are ready to get care packages to send out to them. We've got one who's just deployed over England. We've got them spread out all over the country in different duty stations. So we're gonna send us some things to thank them for their service from the town of Woodmere and just by everyone who helped us celebrate them this weekend. I'd also like to just give a brief update on the efforts to bring Old Glory back to the town of Woodmere, which is the horse that used to be in front of the Disney building. We were hoping to make that happen this month again from, uh, in time for Memorial Day. But due to the incredible generosity of the Goudin family, they're actually refurbishing the horse, they want to get it back in its pristine condition. So it's not gonna happen in time for Memorial Day, but we're gonna have to embarrass it or bring that back to town to be a memorial forever. Thank you, everyone.
We have a location for that. A big honor and a big celebration.
Yes, we do have a location.
Thank you, Pam, for all your hard work on this office that made that happen. Uh, but we have a great memorial, but apparently everyone's return begins. Next up is Mr. David Sharp.
Hang on, I defer.
For which I am David.
Uh, F, F. Downtown, probably.
The conditional use?
Yes.
Deborah Neal.
Hello, I'm Deborah Neal, Mike's five oh two street, on the side of our five hundred development. And we, um, think that's fifteen years. And I want to address the condition of use request to allow onsite construction here in the morning or across the street. I didn't send and do not approve. Someone said anything. But I'm here, just to let you know, I'm talking right, I'm talking right time. But, uh, that's what I want to speak to. And I think everyone, I hope that I, um, we already have enough alcohol establishments in a relatively tall area right here, one square. Um, they also have been the application. The people who wrote that obviously don't live in Woodmere. Uh, they think, you know, we have this, by, we buy the restaurants and establishments to go to. We're not, we don't want it. And so they want to add more to attract visitors. We don't want it. Uh, that's not what we're going to do. They're going to, even if they're just, maybe they were reworded differently, and they had a notion that they're old enough. Um, there's, um, our goal is to develop this town to the benefit of the residents. And I think we need a balance of what's out there. And I think we've got that on that side. The percentage should be at least that. Um, and I have, it'd be nice if we wanted additional recount. There's, I don't, I don't, your options are, it's hard to act like that was the development folks are on. But I would ask that you not go in this direction. I understand that some of the other establishments here don't fully support having this new, this new business, this particular one in there. And I do think that we need to really appreciate the establishment that has been here for years, some relative years since moving here. Since it's been here fifteen years. But they have been a boost to the town, a boost to the community, and I think we need to take their view and how they're operating this town and how they're successful in this town, and not undermining any of the respect that they have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out and adding a vote comment, and just knowing we're directly behind the five hundred block new development, right? Great. Next up is Janice Dugan. Janice? Janice, if you mind, are you good?
Yes.
Okay, not a problem at all. And then Sarah one ten Forest Street. Sarah, feel good this is your last meeting, so we definitely have that for you, right?
Hey, everybody. This is Sarah Douglas. I'm, um, at one ten Forest Street. And it's been brought to my attention that we are looking at the possibility of this permit for a high-end exclusive membership, which I have not been pleased. During Woodmere, I will cease to be excluded from the products that are allowed to use. Uh, so I think I've been involved with that since Woodmere for the rest of twenty years, and I fully support. The feedback that you have provided, I haven't seen the form myself, so I guess I'm using the form. Uh, so I just, I'm going to voice my opinion. I think things, uh, why are we, has been for, on the deck of Woodmere for so many years, and I feel that we're kind of slowing that down with all these controls on the alcohol and wine rules that seem to be, um, based balance. But I want to make sure that they agree with everything that you shared. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for coming to add both comments tonight. And we will be discussing the conditional use permit later on in the proceedings again, uh, some details. Next up is Brad. This is two A, comprehensive thing on our comprehensive plan evaluation and reasonable application letter for the permit.
Thank you, ma'am. Brad, my associate, I'm sort of a conference commander. This is just for your information, if you're actually required, that's for your, so you're aware. Um, as you all know, we have these towns conference plans. And every seven years under state law, every local government, which is the town, um, we are required to update our comprehensive plan. So that process now begins. The first step of that process is a pretty simple step, and that's what this letter is. We just have to send the letter to the state of Florida, to the Department of Commerce, just letting them know that yes, we are going to update our comprehensive plan as required by state law. One of the things that we have to do first is we have to make sure we're complying with all the changes to state law that have happened over the last seven years, which by and large, we are complying with. But there were some recent changes, such as we have to have in our comprehensive plan, if we don't have currently, a ten-year and a twenty-year planning horizon. We have to have both of those planning horizons. We don't have that now, we just got one, we have one entire. So we'll have to do that. We'll have to redo the population projections. Um, so, and also another important update that we do, is we turn your water supply plan now, which is for the water design, for the implementation, and update that as part of the comprehensive plan. So that's, and all the other things related to state law, um, but those were the main ones. And then the other, probably the more important part is then also update based on changes in local additions and needs and direction. And what this town was one through seven years ago is different today. So there may be other events and things that we needed to have in flesh out as we go through the process. So all this letter is doing is going to state afford it. That's what we're going to do open next year. So by June first of twenty twenty-five, we have to send to the state of Florida and all the different state review agencies, and other agencies that review comprehensive plans. Um, these, way to say is our draft new plan. It's called Trinville, and then that is your draft new plan by June first of twenty twenty-five. Then have sixty days to review it, um, provide some economic feedback, and then come back to us, and we have another, about a year after that to adopt it. Usually it doesn't take nearly that long after that. So we're embarking, starting today. About a year and a half process of the comprehensive plan. And there'll be many more meetings and workshops and discussions as we go through this. Um, so just to make sure you all are ready, this goes down with that.
Like yesterday, we just did it.
The time goes very quickly, yes, sir, yes, sir. And very likely, after going through this, the major changes in next state session that we may have to address as well. It's a moving target for sure.
Okay, right, thank you. Next up is our meeting minutes. So there's three meeting minutes for the town council, which will be March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. It's spelled as Town Council Meeting Minutes for April ninth, twenty twenty-four. And Town Council Workshop Minutes, which is a project update for April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Council meeting. Group decent meeting, or as one senior item for all three.
Yeah, I wish we could approve all three sets of meetings.
I should approve all three by council person. That is, second council person, David, right? Questions, trials, support, concerns, council? Seeing none, will we get a voting, council person, sir?
Aye.
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 Meeting minutes, item number one, two, and five, eight, group and council. Next up are contracts and agreements. This is item one. This is approval to negotiate contract agreements with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. This is our, you know, twenty twenty-four, item one. Staff recommends approval, planner.
Yes. So this comes through what we call the CCNA process, which is the Consult Competitive Negotiation Agreement Act. And we have to comply with that when we're selecting engineering firms for continuing engineering services. So this is put out for what we call a request for qualifications. We put that out. We received five responses back from engineering firms. We did an initial evaluation, and that committee was John, that's given, myself, and Councilman Davit. From there, we selected three firms to present to us. They presented to us, um, our presentations from each of the firms. And from that, we again evaluated them, graded them, and this evening, we are recommending that we move forward with Kim Lee Horn. Um, Kim Lee Horn is our current engineering contractor. Their work has been, um, good for us, and we've been happy with that service. Additionally, they are what we would call the, um, most qualified of the three that we interviewed. We are reserving the right, however, if the town gets more engineering service needs, that within three to four months, we could go back and negotiate a contract with the second grade firm if it looked like we needed more engineering help. As a small town, what you don't want to do is not have enough work for two firms to keep them busy. Under CCNA, you have two ways to distribute work. You either have to give it to one, and then the next project to the next one and rotate it, or you have to break it down by the type of engineering services that you would need. So what the committee's recommending this evening is that we move forward with Kim Lee Horn with the right in three to four months to come back and look at the second grade firm if it looks like we would have the work to support them.
Another change that is obviously, we have some unique characteristics in that town that we've taken the time together to educate each other on and kind of best meet those, and I think that consistency is helpful in that regard. Uh, council staff, you were, um, reviewing your, you weren't like that?
Yeah, I just want to call a topic for folks to process. It was a very thorough process. We went through reviewing not only the initial proposals, but then submitting to the live interviews for top three firms. And I think it's right for people for.
Do I make the motion, sir?
I would like to make the motion to approve, uh, the approvals to negotiate contract prices.
Motion made by council person Davit, second council?
Second.
Second council person Williams. Any additional questions, uh, from council, to the right? Seeing none, and, uh...
Aye.
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 And one, uh, are you pleased with the fourth, that's your one, uh, is approved again, asleep. Next up is item number two. This is the twenty twenty-three number, and agreed for participating Orlando Orange Urban Security Initiative. I can see that's a mouthful. Um, license plate readers. DC, are you presenting on the side?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the Orlando Orange Urban Area Security Initiative was awarded three point six million dollars to increase safety and security in this area. This grant will focus on providing licensed vehicle equipment that had two hundred thousand dollars to town and other strongpoint cities. Once the memorandum reassigned, we expect to receive this equipment and training by the end of twenty twenty-four. So we are, uh, requesting approval on that.
Pretty easy, looking.
It's gonna be mobile. It's gonna be one device that's mobile, and it'll be able to move anywhere around town wherever you might need it. And it captures, uh, license plate data from far away.
Especially with the type of crime that we tend to see here, which are, you know, tend to be posted in and cleaning out. And this could be a good addition, especially if it's, you like, uh, the range. And then another positive for two is we have a set of, of solo vehicle where it passes by, it's a notification whoever logged into it.
So it's, it's not just capturing only that. It's also getting something, you know, real time.
Council, any further questions?
Yeah, just, DC, what's the interaction between the class, obviously, that's if you send it directly to the dispatch or?
So we can have it set up directly to our dispatch, way of co-lead us to currently. And we can also have it set up to our offices to log directly into the device. It's set up with a cellular connection, so that can see things real time.
And will you be able to review the data that is collected?
Yes, sir. So if we happen to have a property crime or something, where we have a suspect vehicle, we will go back through and see all the data that passes, and then free.
And it's non-selected, so the issues, right, seriously?
Exactly. It takes every... And it's not, it's not for tracking forces, just available. It's not tracking for students. Just to collect data as it passes by, it's very work.
Council, do you approve a motion?
That's a tear, Chris.
Motion approved. Council person needs.
Aye.
Second council person, David. Can I vote, council person, sir?
Aye.
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 That individual, remember, agreement is, uh, speaking, I'm just thinking. Next up, our financial. This is the approval to purchase two patrol cars for sixty thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, DC, are you going to present?
Yes, sir. So currently, we have two, my mark vehicles are twelve, seventeen, four, fusion, and one's my cell phone, and one's a detective. Both vehicles have significant, uh, issues that require leisure repairs that are way out of the seat, but they're value. One vehicle, vehicle thirty-nine, has nine thousand dollars in repairs. Vehicle forty requires eleven thousand, which is, both have transition issues, brakes, tires, and then vehicle forty needs whole finance suspension. Currently, we, uh, twenty thousand dollar repairs for two vehicles that aren't worth half that, and we feel is just irresponsible. So we look at purchasing two vehicles and then the option of leasing two vehicles. The first option was purchasing vehicles to go land with a Dodge. We chose a dealership because it's closest to the land here, um, Woodmere for Service. And with the corporate showcase, we get your Dodge, we're able to get two twenty twenty-three Dodge Charger. It's S sixty, baseball, M eight, something, and crazy. And it's a good, I can, I can think of, man. Nobody's just one for me. So with, uh, for one vehicle, it would be twenty-five, five ninety-three with the trade-in. And then for the second vehicle, it would be twenty-eight, nine hundred and three, that's the trade-in. Two different cars. One has significantly more miles than the other, so it's... Two different cars, one has significantly more miles than the other, so it's worth more than the other. With the emergency equipment, we're we are using a lot of our original with no cars, so we're trying to keep the cost down. And that's going to be six thousand dollar net on for both cars for this equipment. With a total of not sixty, sixty thousand five hundred eighty six dollars. We uh myself and Tara have already spoken with some of this bank. They can do a five year loan at four point nine interest rate. Uh, this is significantly less than if we were uh put a new cost to this budget if we were to get the vehicles repaired. Uh, going forward, we should expect to pay about seven dollars per year finance for each vehicle. And currently, we have about four months left of this budget cycle, so the hit until October will be about twenty two hundred dollars for the vehicle. So about forty five hundred if it's fixed, if the new cars versus replacing uh repairing them for twenty thousand. Second option, I won't do too much detail because uh enterprise rental, if we do a lease, it would then have cost us about ninety thousand dollars. For the two vehicles after five years, because they have a hidden three thousand dollar admin fee, their charges are ten percent interest rate. And at the end, they were making a space of seventy five hundred dollars fee per car to keep it. Their plan is more or less, they're trying to either buy new cars every five years or how much to keep them. We can keep cars much longer than five years. We don't need a lot like larger agencies, so no risk for us.
Council, move for a motion.
Motion two great.
Move for council person needs.
Sorry.
Second council person David. Council, any questions on that circuit there for the second? Seeing that, will be anybody who had a council person needs?
Aye.
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 Alright, move for two new cars and every time on the seat, I'm going to ask you to. Next up is uh item for consideration. This is item one. This is C twenty four dash zero seven, five two seven Main Street. When you're downtown property LLC from wine Inc. I think it's A Barn Coop Mark, I hope I have that right. Karen and Rose, square. Conditional use to allow onsite consumption of beer or wine. Uh, development agreement were provided, no recommendation. So this will be a board auction after our presentations were started, right for the expenses.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first, other rings, the town attorney has disclosures to review, so then I will present.
Thank you for keeping me on track, council. Keep us all in the.
Hi, mayor. Hi, mayor. Good afternoon. Um, just a couple reminders about this evening. This was a five sided judicial public hearing, which means that the town council is going to apply the criteria of the town's code, which is uh practicing the overall criteria with you, as opposed to making policy decisions, which we do figure out. Um, the decisions to be made tonight must be based on the evidence presented this evening. And um this is a public hearing, so the mayor will open up and have public comment, all of those things. First, I'm going to have Dorothy go ahead and before Brad starts and swear in. Brad, since he's going to give expert testimony. And then also, what I would like each of you to do is to disclose whether you have communications regarding the proposed conditional use permit application outside of the public hearing tonight. Um, any indication as to if you have the resources and nature of your communications, which will allow the applicant to um paper bubble or if their side of it to go ahead and do more information based on decision time. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give this evening regarding the conditional use permit application for Sun Wine Inc. doing business as Solvino will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Council, we need to close our earlier town council meeting. Uh, here, new stuff.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. At this time, six thirty, six P M, the flows are very, very specific. We're going to your town council meeting and open up a public hearing at six thirty, six P M uh to discuss item Z twenty four dash zero seven. Brad will present and then we will um have a conversation from the applicant's uh attorney, as well as any public comment. And council session, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And right this way, transferring to contact account plan. As the mayor said, this is a conditional use request. This is C twenty four dash zero seven. In the proximity of five twenty seven Main Street, here across the street in the project that you all know, it's a five hundred block project. Uh, what this request is, is as part of the project, one of the businesses that are looking to locate there is the Solvino Wine Business. And it's required, it's part of that business operations is consumption on premises. Under your land development code, that type of business, consumption on premises, beer and wine. If it's within a thousand feet of another location, it also serves beer and wine, which in this case, we have um Bola Coffee, which I'm going to recall. They had conditional use purchase recently, but Bola tends wine, the linear brewery. Um, we also have um Lucy Cream and then actually Pizza Fourteen also has those approvals. It's also within a thousand feet of a church, which the person had the family church property right there. So we're within a thousand feet of those locations. Therefore, um it does provide condition for use. So under your section of your code, under section uh or section eight eighty two of the Code of Ordinances, this is not under land development code, this is actually your Code of Ordinances. Um, the town has adopted a thousand foot separation requirement for places that serve alcohol consumption on premises. And that is in your code. And generally, why local governments will adopt those kinds of separation requirements is related to uses such as consumption of alcohol or other things, where maybe a limit to the maximum that may appropriate within an area, so that there's it's not uncommon thing to have. But what you also did within your 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 Code of Ordinances for this issue is you also provided an opportunity for an advocate to request the town council to waive the thousand foot separation requirement through the conditional use process, which is what we're going through tonight is that condition for use. So they are going through the process, asking you as a council to waive that thousand foot separation requirement. And that's why this is important, so I'm going to make that very obvious for you this evening. Um, and as Mr. Mayor said, important now when you evaluate this, your evaluation is based on your requirements when you look at a conditional use under section fifteen of your land development. And under that section of your land development code, you have seven criteria that you need to look at. And for you to approve this request, you need to get over to say, make the finding that they meet all seven criteria to to be able to make that finding of recommendation approved. So I'll go briefly through the seven criteria. I will not give you the response to that. I'll let the applicant provide their justification. So I don't want to make their argument for that, but I want to give you the information you'd need to make your decision on the request. Uh, so the first, the first item that I need for consideration is whether the conditional use will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and in appropriate appearance with the existing or intended character of general vicinity that such use will not change the essential character of the same area, so the harmonious with the surrounding area. Whether the conditional use will preserve and to town say are federally designated historic, scene, archaeological, or cultural resources. I will say for ones that don't apply, we don't have that situation here with this request, so that that actually shouldn't apply. Um, whether the conditional use will be compatible with adjacent residential development, depending based on characteristics of the site, building size, on scale, or whether such compatibilities are mitigated to such moves, screening, landscaping, setbacks, and other design features. And I'll say that this one, yeah, we had our proof, it's a building layout and location as part of the project as a whole. I will say the applicant has knowledge and they are required to follow all requirements of the development agreement that's already in place for the five hundred block. So they do have to, anything that they do do, it has to comply with that. Unless you alter, it's part of the condition of this, but otherwise, they should be complying with the development for the five hundred block. Um, next is whether the conditional use will estimate adverse impacts on availability, usability, and nearby land uses with noise, dust, fuel, smoke, air from lights, late night operations, orders, drive-by delivery trips, inbound location, and nature of them out for these ways, storage or activities, potential to increase litter, and privacy and safety um issues. So that's another criteria. Um, next is whether the transportation system is capable of safely supporting the conditional use in addition to the existing use in the area. Again, I want to comment here, as you all have followed, we had quite a good discussion about transportation traffic as a project as a whole. This project, again, is part of the five hundred block overall project, so it has been mitigated. It's part of the mitigation that's already been approved by the town for the five hundred block project, which is that transportation mitigation being required to the first step. So we have addressed for the project, so this is part of the project. Just going with that that information. Whether the minimum off street parking area required in a maintenance facility for loading on mobile trucks, backload, and providing a function parking safely. Again, they're under the parking has been approved for the five hundred block. And last, generally, whether generally the public health, safety, welfare will be preserved and feasible conditions necessary for such preservation have been made. And and those, so those are your seven criteria. So those are what you need to evaluate based on the information that you have in your staff report, based on information the applicant will provide you, based on the public hearing, and based on your consideration of all the information that you have before you make your decision. Is those are the seven criteria that you need to make your decision on. A few general pieces of information about the operation, I won't go into details, you know, that the applicant addressed that. Um, your Code of Ordinances allows sale, sale and consumption of alcohol in business by ordinance between seven, well, not when you say that's a, does not allow it between twelve A M and seven A M. So basically, your Code of Ordinances would potentially allow a a business that would sell and consume alcohol between seven A M and eleven fifteen nine P M under your Code of Ordinances. However, under the development agreement for the five hundred block, which or which oversees this or reestates, um, under the five hundred block requirements, no visits can operate in the five hundred block past ten P M. So there is a hard ten P M closeout time under the development agreement that they have to comply with if there isn't a condition that if you all want to do that to consume earlier. But ten P M would be the latest it could operate under the development. Um, there is discussion, you'll see in your application where they discuss maybe doing some type of outdoor seating. Um, we have communicated already that that would not be allowed with the development agreement structure. Um, as you may recall, the development group talks about any permanent outdoor seating that would have to treat as additional floor area, which would then trigger the need for additional parking, which really is a room for additional parking on that property. So really, they're they they won't be able to do outdoor seating under that development. For that. Um, and lastly, we also want to just again say that this is being developed as part of the five hundred block project. I felt well exactly what mean that they would go in, but they would be in building one, which would be developed on the corner. Um, they would be in in that location. And again, the applicant, in her application, the materials are fully understood and consented that, yes, they will be complying, need to be consistent with the development agreement and all the requirements of that P P D for the five hundred block, so that that also is regulating this. Lastly, in terms of analysis, um, under your ordinance, in terms of enforcement of violation of the conditional use, you have triggered already within your Code of Ordinances. And what that says, that the town council will have to go back to you on. But the town council may revoke the conditional use for the consumption on premises. If they either violate conditions of approval, if you place any conditions on your approval, if they receive more than two code enforcement violations, or they receive more than two registered piece, consider reports and account every year. So if any of those situations were occurred, then they could be brought back for this town council to be sent with conditional use. So those are, those protections are already with the, with the ordinances. Next, I'll give you a brief overview of the development report, development D board meeting. So we did have this case before the development D board had been meeting on April sixteenth. We had three members present, which wasn't a forum, so we had a forum. And they had quite a good discussion. Um, we had three motions, all vote, every motion failed. Uh, we'll just briefly say, um, council, uh, D R D member Rose made a motion to deny it. Um, basically with the finding that adding another place for consumption of onsite uh beer and wine and alcohol was not compliant with the town for, and good for the welfare and care of the town. And she made that motion, it was seconded, but it did fail by vote of two. So that motion failed. Um, D R D member Roper then made a motion to recommend approval with the conditional place of the hours of operation, you know, between the hours of ten A M and seven P M. Um, that motion failed due to the lack of a second, so that motion did not move forward. And then the last motion was made by the D R D member, Mr. Withers, and he made a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use as requested. Um, that motion was seconded, but that motion also failed one to two. Um, because we had two members, we each of them made a motion, they each failed. None of them were wanting to change their position or their thought. Um, the decision was to go forward with no recommendation from town council and to your option of to approve or to deny the request based on your evaluation. So that's how the D R D um played out. For public notice, so we did send out a public notice. Um, so we we did receive initially, we received five in support and seven in opposition to the mail notices. We did receive the other day uh from Mr. McKinley, who initially submitted a letter in support, rescinded his support to a a letter of opposition. So our official count on those responses was four in support and eight in opposition. And then, as you all know, Mr. Furkalter forwarded them all to you. Over the last few days, the the town received several emails. And I found of all the emails that you can see, there have been twenty one emails, all in opposition to the request. Um, I did forward all of the emails to the applicant, so so they are aware of them as well. So that was our public response um in terms of the. I'd be happy to answer any question. I have a minute's time again. Um, Ms. Roper was here and she can provide the applicant's case.
Thank you, Brad. Let's see, um, we have questions for you first. Did I hear you correctly saying, or just want to make sure that this is important, that has to be all seven of the criteria and standards?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But like anything, like with your zoning and on any kind of cases or variances, you have to meet all the criteria, not just a few.
And there's nothing that stops anyone from opening up their shop. Is what we're discussing tonight is conditional use for serving alcohol during specific hours under our conditional use?
It's for only for the consumption on premises, right? They couldn't open up just a straight retail with no consumption on premises without a condition. Yes, sir.
So make sure that everyone knows exactly what we're talking about tonight, so we can have good, uh, healthy conversation on that. Counsel, any additional questions for Brad?
Yes, sir. So Brad, you mentioned that the Code of Ordinances says that entities sell alcohol must remain in thousands of feet of fire, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other businesses that are limited in our Code of Ordinances that?
No, this is the only use you have in your code that has separation business.
Counsel, any additional questions for Brad?
Thank you.
So we worked, so there's not going to be any outdoor seating? Does that add square footage?
Right, 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 right. Right, we, if they would make that page and show that, we would.
It's all the questions that we have for you, Brad?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Acceptance the applicant's representative? That is Karen and Rose, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, here.
Mayor, before before she proceeds, perhaps you did, um, if anybody has anything listed on the record about conversations that you've had that might be helpful, so then she can also incorporate that into her.
Absolutely.
Into her um presentation.
So and I hope you have your microphones. Early onset.
It sounded like it was.
Okay.
Do you want me to say it again?
Nope, I think we heard it.
Alright.
What we want to do is um kind of settle uh from each council person as to the conversations that they have had uh in relation to this agenda, I guess. I'm sure.
Answer is yes. Uh, I've got the same email that we have. Question of opinions and then some home halls, question of opinions. And we call many in-person conversations, but answer is yes.
Same here. I've had plenty of calls, I've had questions about beating all the seven uses. What, what are the town's options? Because a lot of those questions came up when we did the 500 block development, was if there any stay for the council to actually deny it? Because a lot of people were asking me, they were assuming it's a slam dunk. I've been, but they felt strongly. It's, it's...
Thank you, sir. I've had discussions, let's see, I've had discussions with several residents and members of the public, and I have spoken to, you have spoken to...
I have conversations with the majority of property and some residents as well, that come off of the, in the home use.
Yeah, I've had several conversations, texts, messages discussing the fail.
I have had discussions with our town lawyer. I have had lots and lots and lots of discussions, we had texts, done a call, in person, emails, and then, you know, voicemails also, so a lot.
Set me later along.
I think maybe when you're, when the applicant is presenting, if there was something specific that came up in those conversations, that would be a great time to ask or, or something you heard or that you weren't sure of, the answer would be, should be better.
You definitely do that thing, Karen, with it.
All right, good evening, councilors, to her point too. For example, it sounds like someone is spoken to in order to enjoy it. I'm going to make certain presentations in here that we try to reach out and keep your back, so, you know, it would be helpful to know some of that conversation if at all possible. So, good evening, my name is Kara Andrews, I'm an attorney here on behalf of applicant Solvino Watts. It's a family-owned business, it's a husband and wife team, it's actually Arjun Kumar and Sarah Kumar. Before and again, Mr. and Mrs. Kumar, they prepared their own materials. I sent over to the clerk, they opened the letter that Andrew showed, they wanted to submit to the council. I have copies here, if you want to take a look. And they also did a short video. And videos about the concept and who they are and what they're trying to do. And I did speak with Mr. Fitzgibbon, so I think that it will play. And if afterward we're due, we will watch this free video on the process and...
Hold on.
Arjun, I'm Sarah. Are you...
We're sorry we can't make it to the meeting today. We had a commitment to attend my mom's 70th birthday out of the country, and we hope to meet everyone soon.
Well, we wish you could be there in person, we wanted to provide this introduction along with the letter that maybe brought us more clarity on our different standing issues.
Why don't you perhaps speak first to some of your really non-alcoholic beverage, but to us and the others, it's an art form. Just like any type of art, not everyone understands, but those who do can make an emotional connection. You can buy them a bottle.
At Solvino, we aim to allow for invested questionless experience. We have designed a beautiful space that will welcome mature customer bodies to have aquatic locations to escape the chaos of tourism and appreciate the beauty of our collective hometown winter gear. We hope to attract customers from this surrounding area who will contribute to the other businesses in the town as well. We hope our customers will come to spend a significant part of their day in the town rather than a high-volume practice. Look forward to meeting our members while we're sure they're here, and we wish everyone a wonderful and safe summer.
Okay, so, that is the Solvino context they presented to you today. It is a higher-priced point focus wine retailer with a flair for international wines in a comfortable, relaxed atmosphere, something that we hope folks of all backgrounds will enjoy, but we understand it is not necessarily for everyone. Tonight, we are here before you for one reason and one reason alone, and Mr. Cornelius mentioned that very thinly. We are here to seek approval for wine by the glass offerings, consumption on premise. Now, I want to keep this as short and sweet as possible. I think the video and the letter that the client prepared, as well as our original narrative which addresses each of the seven criteria, does well to explain the thought and reasoning for this model. So I just want to drive essentially two main points home. And, you know, hopefully get everyone out of there. So, the two main points, the first addresses the not-so element in the room. You have heard from many already through these emails, these calls, these voicemails, and several strongly worded objections. Tim's Wine Market. My first point is your turn. Approval of this conditional use permit is actually a vote for Tim's Wine Market. And the best thing this council can do to minimize competition between these two stores. Point two, denial of this CP. Given the facts before you and the statements that we established in our narrative related to your standard of review, denial of this CP, in our opinion, is equivalent to a market control inconsistent with the standard of review to which this council is bound and the spirit of all of the government. So the point one, how could it be? How could it be that allowing wine clients, new wines to go to this down the street somehow benefit Tim's Wine Market? You've already heard a lot about how the wine stores not what this community needs, so on and so forth, then some of you may agree with that. But that is not the question before you, as Mr. Cornelius may clear. To be clear, it would be patent error for this council to attempt to deny the CP on that basis. Because I'm going to be crystal clear about this, more so for the public than for the councils, I think you all understand. This wine store is coming to town regardless of the decision that is made today. It is here. It is solely a request before this council to turn wine by the glass. That is it. And I know we all appreciate the passion with which folks have come after this. That's what local government's all about. But it is deeply misplaced in this case and must be disregarded because Solvino is allowed by right, by the permissible uses actually granted by this council already in development order previous to be a wine package store. So the sole issue before this council is whether it is going to approve the model that our client has clearly spent a lot of time developing to try not to compete with Tim's Wine Market. Or, by denying it, essentially force it to be nearly identical to the Tim's Wine Market model. It will directly be. That's why I vote today, is actually voting in support of Tim's Wine Market. Because as of right now, based on my client's analysis of this area and the wine he wants to sell, he, you know, read past the first page of that letter, he does, does a lot of analysis. He can stay with his business model of wines above a hundred-dollar price range. As I pointed out during the development review board meeting, you can go on to his website right now, and 70 to 80 percent, if not more, of those wines are all under a hundred dollars or around that. So my client's intent is to focus on lines above that price range and to not offer any sort of promotions, events, things that Tim's market is known for. But the only way to do that is to be able to offer the wine by the glass option, which allows Solvino to supplement its income, allow for more steady revenue generation, because it's offering lines at a higher price point that not everyone can be able to, may be able to afford. That's sort of the point. It is limiting its, its gravity. But if it can't be allowed to have consumption on premise, it will shift its model and become the very thing this process right here tonight can prevent altogether. Offer value ones, offer promotions, and directly be. It also is allowing that license to still offer samples that is state law, so it can still provide certain amount of samples on site. And that's just the reality of the situation. And I'd like to point out, as I mentioned before I started, of all the voices to be heard, he had not heard the gravity from Ms. Hammer, the owner of Tim's Market. And I submitted to the clerk that copies through today, my client's test you chat, to Ms. Hammer directly on social media and trying to build a store directly to try to foster that relationship. He never heard back. So we had tried to start a conversation directly to see what would be best for them, because as a reminder to this council, when the prior owners submitted their own letter for a consumption on premises, which is public record, I think that obviously would be a thing. But it do not have to do with wine by the glass, it will lead to a better pricing rate for the distributors. That's just alcohol beverage law, if you have a state of the license under state law, you get a better price. So at least it didn't start as a model with a wine by the glass focus. Now, we wanted to take on inside a lot of that's changed, and how we've worked together, but weren't provided that opportunity. So on the other end of this, our closest neighbor is Paloma. And again, I under the impression here that actually the Paloma coffee folks are in favor of this, but they are fine with our business selling across the street from us. Now, if I, you know, there are ragged conversations, contrary, I would appreciate knowing, but that is the representation that my client makes me. So as a whole, the thing that I really want to convey is that the clients have gone through this process, taken the garage of losses on the chin first, intentionally. Didn't have to do this, we didn't have to appear in front of the public. We could have just appeared overnight and as a package store directly in competition with Tim's Wine Market without letting this community get involved at all. And so, from our client's perspective, there's a bit of enforcement irony to that. But the point here is that the council is bound to make a decision based on the standard of review before it, which has nothing to do with whether wine stores are allowed. We have addressed every factual in our narrative, so to Mr. Cornelius's point, one through six are essentially already met because of this traffic, and this transportation, and this parking. Those have all been dealt with under the development order to which this property is going to be located. It's really just the last one, the safety and welfare, which is my second. So we leave all these met, you know, the council should grant this request on that basis, but we also, you will agree that a vote in favor of us is truly a vote in support of Tim's Wine Market because they're able to do something that they do not do. So point two, denial of the CP, given the facts before you, this is going to do a market control here, inconsistent with the standard of review that is, this council is downplaying and is fearing of the government. So this is actually an argument that was advanced by Mr. Withers at the development review board meeting. So, I'll follow a spirited discussion, but Mr. Withers got into a spirited discourse within this course. What I believe is here today. Mrs. Rose wanted to deny it altogether, and he believed that the deny was essentially based on this concept of controlling the market in this local area. This idea that if you deny, because you know we already have wine retailers here or just don't think it's appropriate for this community, to Mr. Withers, and I think just as an observer, I think he cared one way or the other necessarily about the project. But he adamantly defended the basic principle that the government should not be trying to control this community inside its best borders if that is the basis that is going to be a certain... In his mind, I believe he thought that was a very liberal, social justice warrior sort of message. Instead of allowing this community to speak for itself, as is the capitalist way. So the point being, if it is true, like these folks that have raised their opposition would suggest, that they are the true voice of this community. So not considering the mailing list that my client has, about 1,100 people who have signed up in a three-mile radius now and then. We heard this, I heard this all last time in this year. I know every one of those people are not necessarily members of this town, we get that. And I'm happy to go into a discussion about small-town revenue generation and how you do to some extent need some folks to come visit this town. It's really just a matter of having the right place. But ignoring the fact that those folks do want this here, and presuming that some of them are part of this, let's listen to sort of this passionate, you know, ad hoc, not lean talk, but of this idea that if they're right, the market will prove itself, the community will put their money where their mouth is, that's the point. That is the spirit of the capitalist capitalist society, the idea that market controls are very literally appropriate. And I think, again, Mr. Withers didn't have a dog in his fight, but I think he understood in his mind, that his hands were tied, that this project is in the development that has already been approved, fully vetted, parking, traffic, security, all dealt with, each standard of review, as I said. We believe that, except the last one, the welfare issue, the classic police power. We believe this would be the sole basis of denial in this case, because essentially this project is not advanced for welfare receiving. And that's where I believe Mr. Withers recognized that in this instance, because all of these other factors are right, because we're already limited in assignment, we can be open, because you have code enforcement provisions that will revoke our conditional use if we have any, you know, two violations, two citations. He recognized that in this instance, to deny it is essentially a very socialist concept. And so what I wanted to do this evening is provide what we believe is sort of the legal standard for welfare, to help this council decide, okay, what does welfare mean? And so, I had pulled a U.S. Supreme Court case that I think could offer guidance. I'm not saying it's the letter of the law, but it is guidance, I think, in this case. And that case is Nellie Dukeley versus Campbell Realty Company, I did provide it to the clerk ahead of time. And it basically says that police welfare power is based in a nuisance law. You know, this idea that you exercise the welfare power if you can describe it or you believe that it is akin to a nuisance in the community. And that's a funny line in there that I enjoy, where it's talking about how decision-making with the welfare ballot should be based on locality, where something is the right thing perhaps in the wrong place. And it says it's like a pig in the parlor instead of a barn. And I thought that was fitting here, because ultimately in that case, the court was looking at the development of heavy industrial activity in a small town. And there was a large variety of these industries, they multiplied and just coming up. And the town in that case decided that those industries would not be disallowed altogether, but proceed with defined fixed lines. Solvino legally is not a pig in the parlor shop, it has gone out of its way to not be a nuisance. Careful about how it sells its products, who it cavers to, going in a place that already has dealt with late-night noise concerns, parking, all of that, such that the sole basis for denial cannot be based in nuisance law. But instead, in this concept of save the community from itself, that is not a basis under which this council can deny the CP. And I think that's what Mr. Withers recognized, and we hope the council adopts that same decision. And that's all I have, I did just basically, you can just briefly want to address the comment by Mr. Tony about the concept that this is the only type of business that has this exception. I think it's relevant for the council to know that is state law. You are required as a town to have some sort of exception, a distance waiver essentially from schools and churches. Towns are allowed to alter that a bit, it can be 500 to a thousand, so on and so forth, but it is a requirement of state law that be part of the working system. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Rovers. Couple of questions, can you talk to us a little bit about your overall plan of operations? Because I, I hear us talk about what it's going to be, but I'm still struggling with what exactly we're talking about. And then the nap, and do a lot of wine shops, high-end, low-end, middle-end, but that's different.
Sure, so I think there's been some phrase that's been formed around the exclusive bar. We are not denying anyone access to our bar, I think it's because I made a reference to speedies and I didn't... But we are like any other retailer that sells essentially alcoholic beverages. We will have some seating. That's already been approved by the development order. And we will essentially be more than educational, international experience of the concept. So the idea being that someone comes in who is a wine connoisseur or wants to be one. And so they already have a type of wine that they love in mind. They go, they purchase the wine, or they ask for, based off of that preference, a wine by the glass option. And so our folks who are going to be working in this shop are going to guide them through essentially an experience that starts with the wine they enjoy. Let's say it's an old red, I don't know the wine concept quite, you know, it's an old red and they provide the option to have potentially a different wine by the glass based on a similar preference. And so that's the idea behind the wine by the glass. It's really more of a product of the type of folks that likes to have wine, that they like to talk about, or express that sort of thing. So it's not meant to be a place for high turnover. Like I said, it's not going to be promotions or you know, buy one get one free. That is not the model. And is specific to higher density products. And there will be food offerings. Now, that was a concern, you know, having folks, you know, have a lot of alcohol without food. But it is not food that we are preparing. We would like to allow folks for food from the outside nearby community or have a relationship with a local pizza shop to have, you know, chocolate rewards, just small things. To deal with any of those concerns about people drinking a lot. Which we believe in the wine industry, it's not common. And if this was a distillery, I could see the concern about brand alcoholism and there being, you know, under pressure. But we are required by state law not to serve minors. We are legally open for limited time, like the, like Mr. Pernell you said. We're happy, more than happy to have more accommodations on that thing. But ultimately in the industry, it's the standards typically for wine glasses, I believe. But that is the standard by which most bartenders operate. It's a big one, we have bartenders, but the idea being that Solvino is well aware of that issue.
Is there a membership or a fee or is it just open to the general public?
No, open to the general public.
Council, any additional questions?
Just real quick, is Mr. Umar Solvino?
I believe he is. I'm not sure. Yes.
Does he have other Solvinos on staff?
I think so. His intention is to have some, but mostly provide local equipment. I want to just be honest if you want to actually sell or if you believe in that, that's how it is.
You want to comment?
Well, I can make, you can make comments or questions, but I'm also not allowed for the public to have. But I want to make sure, well, the council is very, very good. And your owners represented were ready to give us some questions and answer our questions.
I've had any questions to ask, or anything? Well, sometimes your questions turn into your questions. So if you have public feedback or things that you should address from its internal, you should do that.
If I could very briefly draw this up as a development report here and draw the complex, I'm not sure if Mr. Williams actually owns the building that Tim's Market is in. But the client's understanding is that somebody may have a TSCS from the development order. So that's the case you would judge to, and I'm not sure.
I can answer that.
Yes.
Yes, I do. And I was alone next to the building. I didn't know, but I do not feel the record of any business in town.
Sure.
As you pointed out before.
Thank you for that clarification. Do you want to make your comments? As I said, I know that I may all receive feedback, maybe desire to kind of address that a little bit more. And we can always have a quick look at.
Yes. Some of the concerns that I've heard, oh, and be quite candid, are some of my same concerns that I may be also. That's the thing you think about town councils, we're not just corporation hired to help town. We did, so most of our decisions are.
Well, it's one. That's all the little corner rules that we are sitting on.
So most of our decisions are based on how it affects our quality. First, grandchildren, children, like first, they have twelve, ten years, in this downtown area. They can do it. All, all down to school. So it is that. So some of the concerns that I have, I learned over the last year and a half being a town council I'm listening from speaking, that was how I have a four town council. It was the first, we didn't, maybe this, so based on that, I listed and developed my opinions. We have six retail stores downtown. I know one of yours listed as Refine Arts and Frames. But of the six retailers, five this is the makeup or makeup or downtown. I have to start that. I will just, I remember frequent attempts on who they are. Lived there twenty-five years. I have no strong opinion about that, what competition you bring to them, what they'll bring to you is not any of my concern. You could be a you could be selling, you could be the group with that. So that is a concern that the people that live here have. That's why we have all the emails and all of the opposition. It's not that people don't drink wine a lot, people do drink wine. So I live in public safety and welfare. We have five of the six businesses downtown selling alcohol. I mean hypothetically, that means ninety-five percent of people leave historic downtown as a company. That to me is, is a, it's not, it's not compatible with our residential building. And it's quite frankly, it's breaking by in two. And it is public safety and welfare issue to me. So I'm basing my views on success or value of your business or how it affects teams. I don't agree with teams or have. I think your business model is awesome. I don't think it's even that criticizing, but it remains worse aesthetically. I have at least a real problem with ninety-five percent of our businesses downtown.
May I respond?
Oh, sure.
So number one, when this question comes up, why do I want alcohol fair? I can't speak to and nor would I ever try to tell you, Lord, is there's not a sacred concern to you, a certain element here. The only thing I can say is that the council has not presented any objective evidence, nor has any member of this community that there's always this same safety and security issues. And that by the wine we examine here, that it would, that there's essentially justification as of at this moment, based on crime rate or folks being cited for alcohol issues nearby that that would be justification for not allowing it among retailers. So for example, in Hillsborough County, they haven't written into their code that you have a consumption on premise from it, it doesn't matter what business comes to land upon, there can never be more than essentially five in an area. That is a way that this council and what a way that the town could prevent this very issue that you're stating. Essentially it wants to put a land, so it could be a dentist's office now, but you can't have alcohol in that area because it was once a CB. That would be a better way to address this, whereas of right now, there really hasn't been any, any evidence to support that. There is a legitimate safety concern because of the lack of any indication from any member that it is a problem of that. Now again, I can't speak to your personal opinion, I don't need to infringe on that, but that would be our position.
Yeah, I respect that, but I think an ounce of provision is, is worth it. And I didn't know, I've been in the back of the law for thirty-two years. And you've got to kind of handle the problem before it starts, before, before that. Once again, I wish you guys good luck in either what you do or how you're based on your advice. And the family seems like a great family and I welcome them to be here. Those are just my concerns.
Counselor, raise. Want to push on the spot? I'll make a push on the spot. Well, because, so it's an interesting point. Objective evidence to, one thing, how, how does one present objective evidence to something that hasn't occurred yet?
Well, it hasn't occurred.
In this process.
Exactly. Um, but the important part is for the council to look at that area as a whole.
Right.
And the council has to make a decision based on its homegrown powers and based on criteria of when, of I guess whether you feel like it's appropriate for another liquor license, which this type is a, is a consumption on premise license.
Right. It's not a full license.
Right, not a package, and it's not a package down. I mean, that obviously is over there already. But the council has to make the decision based on, on the information that it has at this time.
Thank you.
I would like to just add on to that.
First, not today.
So, you know, these rules, as you said, were a state statute that, you know, the thousand feet. They exist for a reason. Because if we had twenty, if every building in town had liquor licenses or consumption licenses, then we would pay trouble on a bus, or we would be a, you know, that place would be Silver Ball. Because back in the day, you know, drinking around the world was not a thing. But as a parent of a young child, when a lot of the discussions were happening, the more and more that the alcohol was introduced. It does in fact happen. Those rules of the thousand feet didn't count in errors. They're, they were created for a reason. To give towns guidance, to protect them, so that you don't have too many exceptions. Because, you know, maybe you say five is okay or six is okay and someone else feels like ten is okay. Question is where do we draw the line where it is in fact too much?
Sure.
And that comes down to what our council would best for our town.
May I respond?
Sure.
Um, and yes, and there certainly is about how many people saw and in total in, in one area. And to that point, as of right now, we do already have five different places within a small area. What I think the point that we are trying to make on this is we're not trying to have necessarily overlap. So that concern is born out of same people going to brew, they're going to hop to this place, hop to this place, and they're going to have five incidents. The whole purpose of our model is to try, maybe not successfully, all we can do is try to not be the same customers necessarily that are already being accommodated here. So again, you know, people have their preferences and ensure it could be, I suppose, the fine community members who are over drinks. But we believe that the model really tries to take that into consideration. And that the other distinction that's important is that there can still be sampling on site. So the drinking of wine to some extent will still be allowable. And that is irrespective of whether this is ranked or not. And so it's really a distinction of how much wine essentially. And we're happy to entertain any, you know, limitations that's, that's consistent with law. I'm not sure how much you can get into alcohol side of it. But our decision is to try not to overlap.
Well, to that point, um, you know, because you're not trying to, you know, take people from different places, that's not our point. I don't know, your clients actually live in the town that's in
They do.
In town limits. Okay.
Um, when you don't, they do. In, so the class you offer, they are in case.
Right, other corporate, it's just other corporate, it's one of your.
Right.
We didn't address that at the time. So our town's small, we're paid, because we don't like a lot of people coming in, and that's kind of everything. And you're trying, your client's what to bring, as you said, you're not trying to, you're bringing in different people. And that's where we have issues from the past, as the council's made decisions about our bits that we have, how many of it's we have to hear to clean them down, because we listen to the residents. And they say, we have trash in our yards, this has been done in accidents, we have people parking through our houses. So we're trying to not bring in outside people that are very curious on our streets, there's kids that walk, bikers. That's where number seven to us is very important. And I understand, but for us, that's very important in this town.
May I respond?
Yes, okay.
Um, and yes, and to that point, it was actually raised by Mrs. Bruce and the prior board meeting as well, this idea that you know, attracting, I don't want us to get lost in here, that we're trying to get all these ports here, that's not the point. I'm just saying that the squeaky wheel often gets the oil and that that may be the case here. That is more likely that folks that are for this project are not going to be here and ran the numbers. And that this may be not the, um, data set that's necessarily reflected by people that want us to benefit here. Because you know, it's twenty-seven folks, which is still a good number in opposition, but if there are three hundred people in this town and the other two hundred want it, that, that would be actually needing a criteria. But that, that may be.
So, thank you, Counselor David. I, I think a couple of things as I ponder the standards. You spoke to the issue of market control. There's always a tendency to, one, to make sure that we have healthy businesses downtown. Proper diversity, make sure businesses downtown circle. That is always our goal. I'm certainly not interested in market control. I've been calling socialists here, but I'm not, you promise. I think that's important from my perspective, that I don't have any desire for market. But I do respect the opposition. And I do feel that even with some of the current traditionally used permits that we have, that we are have to be very careful. We're actually currently stretching what I think some people tolerate, live and reside in our country. I hear these issues regularly. Now, I can't predict the future, whether your business model will receive some of the same opposition. But these are also the same businesses that have rolled through here with a hundred people in support. That is not happening here. And part of that is because there's been limited outreach to the community. There has, certainly the owners have not bothered to reach out to you. I think that, that I do face, there's genuine concern, right in the long run, that could change in any way the essential character of the downtown. I think that I want us to be cautious with that. I also want to make sure that we do have healthy businesses. And I think it's important to note that we don't yet know the impact of the five hundred block. We don't know how that's going to change. We don't even know the business to check. So, you know, we know there's going to be a certain, that's certainly changed a little bit. We now know there's going to be a decent wine shop. That's going to change a little bit, do I mean? So, I'm also a little lost in terms of questioning. So if you can serve anyways and your main business model isn't, isn't, isn't consumption, why do we, why do we need that?
Sure. So the samples we don't charge for, that, that's the distinction. Yeah, so in that case, if we had an APS, it wouldn't be a range generating platform and that's why we would have to switch to a more valuable line, a retailer. And then to your point, you know, the concern of the community again, I, I, I do not wade into those waters, but code enforcement, as Mr. Pernell said, two strikes are out, period. I don't think we need, I don't know what notice says, I don't think we get an opportunity to do it. You get to say no more. And I think that is the appropriate type of enforcement action. And certainly the, the town is within its rights to have law enforcement around, to have folks that are going in there and checking to make sure they're doing all the right things. And that's what those procedures are in place for. But again, as you said, I think there, there is a limitation, there are distance exceptions. At the state level, it is churches and schools, that sort of thing. Here, there is also the component of other major businesses. So understandably, there is always a concern with alcoholic beverages. Certainly, as you folks know, there's going to be a restaurant in there serving alcohol. They don't ever get to come in front of you. They're likely even maybe, there could be multiple wine retailers. I'm, I'm not sure that there's a percentage limit. There probably is on how many can be in the five hundred block. But in this case, we believe that because there has not been any evidence presented before you of necessarily an inherent problem with drinking here. With the idea in mind that we are not trying to necessarily cater to that crowd that's wanting to bring that in, especially getting the practice point. It's a higher price point anyway, and that we need to those, those characteristics as well.
Counselor, any additional questions for the applicants? Just real quick.
Just real quick, I'm really sorry, you know, just. You know, as I I had a conversation with the citizens of Wintermere that all um. You know, I I think you know, I was advocating that there, I still have a lot of this, I suppose. Um you know, I think I was advocating, you know, that that because our meeting was, we already have four or five members. So I was like, well, should we go to other businesses? Should we go to the number of real estate agents now? So you know, I appreciate uh you you get to read a thing critically about what is in the best interest of our community here, um. You know, I I do appreciate the citizens that reached out to to have this conversation. Um I I am a supporter of your good and good business. But you know, I'm sitting up here at this table um as a representative for those citizens, so I I appreciate that. Maybe you think through this, I start a little, I don't get how I want to start.
I think I suggested this time, council, that we hear from the public on the side. And we can come back to further conversation of questions that we may have here. Anyone like to address the council side, it's time, feel free, you don't have to sign up, it's in the vote. Yes, Mr. Sharp. We'll start with Mr. Sharp, as he deferred from signing up.
All of them are all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um I saw a hand, yes, sir.
May I? I have a public comment.
Okay, um. Go ahead and come up to the microphone and get ready, and then we're gonna hear from Clark Perkultur uh from a letter that is submitted, thank you, Kevin.
My name is from Bob McKinley, three forty four B, unfortunately, I would be unable to attend the town council meeting on day fourteen, twenty twenty four. I would like this information to be read and inserted into the minutes quickly. On page one hundred and twenty three of the agenda is a letter signed by me supporting this effort. At the time I sent the letter, I was under the misconception that both the local wine shop and the brewery were in favor of this. I recently found out this is untrue. On page one hundred and seventeen, paragraph two of the agenda, in the application, proportion of which is hereby awarded, applicant releases proposed use or learn supports the town winners, which is on the community's cultural experience. And inspires culinary scene, which includes several elite restaurants, alcohol manufacturers, and wine wine resellers. Applicants alleviate this element of the community by attracting visitors. This statement here clearly shows, clearly shows applicants lack of knowledge of our unique town where they're here. We do not have several elite restaurants, alcohol manufacturers, and wine resellers. Apparently, they are confusing our town with regular restaurants in the area and the people outside our town that like to believe they are part of our unique community. Finally, the statement by the applicants of attracting visitors goes against what most of us desire for our town. Many conversations have been had to eliminate some of our current events due to the visitors creating parking problems and generally disrupting our daily access rates. I am hereby withdrawing my support for and registering my opposition to conditional use. Thank you, Bob McKinley, five thirty six Mainway Street.
Thank you, Clark Perkultur. If you'll give us your name, sir, and your address.
Hi, my name is Brian Smoak, I live at thirty four twenty East South Lake of the Boulevard, and I'm a resident of the town of here, five years. And part of the argument that I heard in the press, I didn't quite get it, was there is no overlap, and there's again differentiation in this new business, but. Quite frankly, there's nothing that um they said that you can't already get at Tim's Wine Market. Uh part of the argument was high end wine, well, yes, they have a variety of ones, but they have. Bottles of wine that see hundreds of dollars or even thousands of dollars if one wants that, so. They have every range of wine available. Another thing I heard was uh differentiation of expertise. If you've ever spent any time in Tim's, you know that the people there are experts in the wine business. And I have accompanied the previous owners. Visits to Napa before on various trips or industry, and I can tell you that they are very knowledgeable on all levels in certification of wine. So this argument of no overlap and significant differentiation doesn't make any sense to me, because there's everything you, the base circuit you get at Tim's Wine already. So I just wanted to make it um, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any additional further comment on this? Frank. Any other, Frank?
Frank, Frank, seven twenty seven Forest Street. Uh I really didn't expect to stand up here and say what I'm about to say, but. Um. I appreciate everything everybody said about. You know, how much sense it makes to limit. The kind of things you have in this town. But given what we've already done. Given the co, you know, the coherence, the what appears to be compliance with the statute of rules. I think you have a hard decision to turn it down. I couldn't do it, based on whatever I would like to. I mean, but I don't think I can. I suppose.
And Frank, appreciate it, great things. Yes, sir. Just uh, can we get him to come up and that picture name? Full name.
Frank, John C W third, uh four, three, two, four, nine, five, eight, nine, five, four. Uh I'm the developer of the building at five o'clock, that's important. Um just briefly on it, um we work in the app, uh the lease, uh I think regardless of your opinion on our concept. I do think that they're very founded in wine culture and wine education, that is a hundred percent their focus and what we were told and what has been discussed and what we get make was that we need. Um I think answering some of your questions is fair one, I do think that's a difficult trigger in wine. Um but I I do believe that there's a space for them to operate here, I I do think that they're, I I think your point is probably the best one that. It is a a tough slope to start. You using this position is not wanting for a specific town. It does have to follow those standards and set holes are laid out, so I would do this process with you guys. I appreciate the the back and forth that we did, uh it's so exciting to see you come around. Um but I just, I think let's, and I was clear, I think we had a use like this, and then from the beginning, so I I don't think this is a blind second, but I hope that you guys will go, like I did say it. Um so I I just wanted, I didn't want to get here and listen to this and not at least speak, and uh I appreciate you all's petition, I don't envy you as town council members at all. Um but you know, thanks for your service and thank you for making, I'm happy.
Yes, I am, Frank, before you sit down. You got up there, brother.
But.
And this is Frank, I do appreciate all the back and forth that we have had as we worked to put something together that we all feel is gonna be done, which brings. Um. Also, what else you got, Howard? Hey, remember, you could ask for it in this place.
No, I would, I know, uh H hardware, uh we have a jewelry store, uh we have a real estate office, sorry, but they weren't here.
Yeah, that's.
Uh insurance office, um and then a uh Italian gelato takeout concept. Um but we're a bunch of whole um. Though it's a great, you know, construction start was a little rocky and and uh, you know, we're doing our best to feel concerns and I've talked to Brad and John and everybody a lot, so. It's not gonna go perfectly fine, I'm spare in the beginning, but I we touch it every hour, okay, we're trying to do it, so.
I have a question.
So is there, is there a restaurant?
Yeah.
Is there a restaurant?
The corner, the corner is a restaurant.
There is.
Corner is a restaurant.
That's what I meant, she.
A full, a full sit down.
It's a clarification on.
And is that lease uh including wine in here, because that is what I've been buying money.
I would. We don't handle that aspect, we just sign the leases to the restaurant, so what their licensure is and what all that, I don't know that, so I just don't want to tell you yes and it's not, or no and it is, and then you tell me I've been subject, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Trey, appreciate you coming in here, continue to get at work to move everything forward. Thanks, Frank. Any additional comments?
Yeah. Hi, C T L six eleven, my second avenue. Um I've been here for years, I'm old now.
Are we all?
So, um I just hope to each and everyone knew about this. Um it's not about entering free enterprise, I'm all for that, if I'm all for um new businesses coming in here. I will say, I did my due diligence, I sat through the DRB, and I came here tonight. I will honestly say for my heart, I can defend it on local representations. I think they are condescended to the town residents. We do know the difference between a wine store and a wine bar, the wine bar is consumption on premises. So when they get up here and kind of swoop us on their model, we understand that. And when they say that all the people in favor are not here, they don't limit our town needs. The people that are here, the town residents, that have a heart with this town, they showed up tonight. So the difference on that, that. We're here tonight and we're telling you that five consumption on premises licenses is enough for a town of three thousand. And that adding another one does break the harmonious environment. I'm not sure we met all of that criteria, I know seven is the intention. But the healthy welfare of a town of two thousand doesn't need six facilities with consumption on premises. I also don't want to be serving wine until ten P M at night, I don't want to become a barter, go to win a bar for them. Go to, not nor, what she suggested in the DRB, I want to keep our town. And the evenings protected for families. At this.
Thank you. And let's call for further bubble comment. Counsel, any additional questions, right, we're at, we're at. Officer James.
Question.
Good.
Well, I guess. The contingency is all seven, correct? I just want to make sure we.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to.
One more, I feel. All seven before we begin to consider.
You need to find a client with all seven.
We thank you everyone for the help in this conversation, it's all the people on it. This time, another name, motion, counsel.
I motion to deny, because the option needs all seven criteria.
Motion to deny, my counsel person, James, second. I second, second, if counsel person's true. Counselperson Williams, is that stating for the record? Any further questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, we begin voting with counsel person's means, or I'm gonna deny. Aye.
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 Motion is carried to deny forward to Sierra, counsel person needs to stay. Thank you all. At this time, actually, I should, sorry, I should have closed the hearing first. You ever redo that?
Yeah, there, one thing I would like, um because Brad's gonna have to deliver a deny a letter to the applicant, is just clarity, maybe um. My counsel remains, say exactly, number seven, exactly, I thought you were just, the general welfare of the town. Um. Say about my comments.
Thank you.
Good, and I've got additional minutes. Alright. Um. Close our public hearing in seven forty six, and reopen our mini year town council meeting at seven forty six as well. I I I apologize for not closing the hearing prior to our vote, this is a big, our. Technicality of these sort. Next up, council's in number two F two, this is ninety percent plans for open meeting, and staff. We're gonna do, here's the meeting.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Fitzgibbon will take you through it, then, Mr. Howe with Kim Lee Horn is here, should you have any questions?
Hold on, we'll, we'll leave my second. Marks, you just want to stay.
Yeah, I can't do that.
It's good, sir. This should go a lot easier. Who knows?
Well, um this is actually for uh the old government tenth Avenue stormwater project that we have going on. Um we had an initial design concept that was reviewed with the local residents, so it was approved. Uh council approved it, and then we moved towards the uh forty five percent documents, which were presented to council. Uh and received approval. At the forty five percent, we actually also met with the residents again, got their comments and incorporated them. Into the new ninety percent set that's here in front of you tonight, um and reviewing it with the local residents, they have agreed that all of the comments that we have. Got from the forty five set is now included in the ninety percent set, so tonight we're seeking approval on the ninety percent set, so that we can go to the bid set documents. So really our stopgap, we as a town decided that at forty five and ninety, if we take a break, make sure we're good, so this is ready for.
Two more questions, yeah. On that, in particular, project, so current council may not remember that project sometime ago, it's that wild.
Yeah.
So um my question is, have we factored everything in we need to for the new bridge? You're gonna.
Well, this is actually, this is actually um.
Oh, that was.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is actually.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You really need some.
Down and tested.
You know, I, since I saw, I saw certain marks and phones down there, and I'm like, that was why I'm gonna.
Yeah, that's why this one made it easier.
And and I wanted to do the bridge, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let's go to the other side.
Yeah, if you go, if you go south.
I'll just be quiet.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, I was gonna ask you, you see, babe, or what, you know, I was gonna get into the details, but I don't know, buddy. Any questions for, for Mr. Skip? You see, I see, I see you coming, I'm ready to build something. Any additional questions, council? Alright. Don't need any more. There are a bunch of approvals that I have to set, I'm asking, I don't really do a thing. Question, counsel person, that's second, counsel person Williams, back in the game. Um any further questions, counsel? Seeing none, we get to it, you know, it's first year.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. There you go, see, that was. Mr. Shrew, um had his uh. His ass to have a special amount of boat house.
Yes. It's about a lot of sleepless nights. Where there's complication with my wife. So I'm just gonna go through what I've written down. I mean, I would say the ISO, this issue of resolve mediation. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody that wasn't at mediation. I don't know all the details of what happened there, I know some, I did talk to all of the community in town. And now looking at a trial game. I don't exactly numbers, there are under two thousand dollars on both sides, individually and collectively. From all. I'm gonna figure out my notes, I apologize, but from all. People involved, it the trial will potentially be held back. So if I do my math, we're, we're in dollars, we didn't say we're done. Um and I did this rough number, I know that, no people will be on that. I don't see that being implemented, I don't. If, if litigation goes forward and hypothetically the town wins, that's their votes, wins, typically restitution is required, so now residents pay back. What happened about the town, no winners. Uh, the residents win, their votes, the town pays back, the residents half a million dollars, no winners. They have boat house, they're just boat houses. It's, it's, the property itself is not that significant, there's no favor on there. There's no reason for it in there, there's no, I don't know, for me, they're just landmarks, they're distorted landmarks. Make them when you're a piss, whether it's on the town or you know, the residents. I don't, I really have a lot of info with this, I'm playing the game. I was hoping, praying that it all be settled in the, in the, in the next three months, because then I would mention it all. Uh, so for, for myself and this over, so to speak. And I'm gonna make this, this has to be contingent, I don't know, this is what they might want, so my, my, residents, so my authority. Um, I really believe that it needs to be contingent upon acceptance from all people involved. I wanna make a motion, and I don't think this motion can be approved here tonight by anybody, but I think it might start the ball going in the right direction. I hope. Uh, my motion is that both parties involved in boat house law suit run the lawsuit. And then neither party seeks legal costs restitution. Previously, agreements are terminated, and the town in near sells the boat houses to previous VCs. Thoughts, boat house sales determined by town council, but will not exceed the current cost of legal fees already incurred by said VCs, in other words, boat house in one. Boat house, that key to name this will fall in the same rules of regulations all residents popping in here. And any further legal costs incurred, it needs to be settled independently by all parties involved. That's it. Um, this, this agreement is going to save the residents that found in near hundreds of thousands of dollars, definitely. I have done much about this, I have talked eighty of the people about this in the town, because these boat houses. I only talked to our council one time about it. I'm looking at this strictly pragmatically as an expenditure item for our town and the residents who. And what we're gonna gain from this, I don't see a big gain in this, if the town gets these boat houses. And the residents have to dish out half a million dollars on top of the lawsuit. I don't see a gain in the, the town being cooperating, the residents cooperating the town, um, the residents have, I don't see a gain, so maybe from all I'm wrong. But I don't see a gain, it's, again, it's a pragmatic decision on my part, I'm not even taking side from too, I don't. I don't support it other than the fact that I think boat house, boat house stay there, I've always enjoyed being there, and I like to stop this needing money on both sides.
Me, Tom, um, so, it's difficult, you know, it's best litigation in other forms, so.
And I'm not discussing, I mean, I, I, I'll make you a proposal.
I'm just.
Litigation will happen, I mean, the, the details of this might be worked out by everybody, so I say it's contingent on acceptance, everybody involved, I'm not litigating, I'm just taking a suggestion.
I'm just, so, I know, but I mean, I think a lot of people have been impacted from here, it's a little bit of a difficult scenario. Nick, with something like this, with something like counsel person's here, this proposal, um, how would that work?
If the board were to want to vote on something like that, the way that it would, and trying to kind of get us there, but. Uh, the way I, I can envision something like that working with the authority to make an offer to the other side to accept reject or whatever, that's all I can, that's all I think. Could come out of that would be, hey, are you guys interested in the following offer? You know, the, the town could authorize the offer being made, some sort of offer being made to the other side. And obviously, it's up to the other side to say yes, no, um, or anything like that. Uh, as, I, as I've, uh, I think everyone knows, this point of mediation didn't pass, uh, I can't talk.
You don't know this. Sorry.
The mediation didn't pass, uh, I can't talk more than that about what happened with the mediation because of, before staffers were cleaning me from doing that. Um, but, in, in all litigation offers can be made inside or outside of mediation, um. I don't think we ever seen an offer from the other side, and trying to, if we did, it was, you know, before my time, other than the discussions of mediation. Um, so, offers can always be made back and forth from one side to the other, and, and, as they always say, things do a tango, so, offer, offer acceptance is going to happen.
So the, the proper chain for that then is to have counsel person, sure, talk to you, tell me that you're, and if you guys want to just get there and offer. And, and then, then give a few proper channels back to counsel. I'm assuming that would work, right?
That, that's, yeah, that's one way it could work, we, uh, take it to the sign, and if the other side is committal to something like that, we give their grant of counsel for approval of final settlement. Which, uh, you know, specifically the way that seven is part of, uh, for county, and, uh, determining who the authorities are going to say, here's what we've worked on this. For final vote on, and, and if that, if that side had offered, and remember here, I'm dealing with, we keep saying that side is actually. Five boat houses, some of them hold the ownership, some are any group of sold, or other people, I mean, I think there are eight or nine groups. That are all involved, and everybody would have to be on board, they're all represented by the same offer, so there is that, but, um. As you can tell, just, I mean, most of, some of your, like, definitions you didn't say in this case, you know the complexities that, that we're dealing with here, so, um. That's, that's the best I can, I would, so I can do that, and it's, it's a difficult scenario here, because, you know, again, you're in the litigation, so.
You know, there was a long time that it worked in, in good faith to try to get something across the finish line, that worked very. Weren't successful, that's, that's why we're here now, the life location, it's, it's where we're at, for different reasons, so. But if there are opportunities to find a, find a situation that counsel could approve, then, and I mean, certainly, I would, would tell you about, see better. And I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna go beyond my authority or, or, I don't wanna step outside my, my, you know, my responsibility, I just wanna know. Is that, is, is that something that's possible, I don't wanna be the mediator per se, but I wanna pass the town council out to consider. What my motion is, which is exactly what you would propose to, those are parties that bring back and ask again, I.
I think that better way to do it is to see if the other, I mean, if, if, if we were to discuss if their side had an appetite for that. We'd give a pretty quick answer, I think, you know, and that's, I, I would hope so, they would say, no, that's a nonstarter, or, I guess that's something we consider. If it's something they consider, let's flesh that out, because as with all settlements, it was a whole deal to them, so. So while it sounds great, when we, maybe we and their side are kind of on the same page, we have to flesh out some very specific details, because this is a very complicated property. Issue that has always, you know, who owns the bottom land, who owns this, who owns that, that all needs to be sorted out as far of, if there was to be settlement, all that would be, and who's transferring to whom, and how are we doing that? So, um, if something like that were to, if there was some basis behind that, maybe give us a sort of a permit, and we brought that to the board, and the board could vote on something in front of them, and it falls open, and all the votes, so.
And, and I, I do appreciate you being forthright with me, every conversation, and I do appreciate you being, um. I just, to be honest with you, I'm not trying to sound like a good guy, or someone to hear and say today, I just wanted to be right, but, that's, that's all. So if that's, if that's a possibility, and, uh, you wanna go over that, or, or address that, and I'm, I'm a little bit of, participate.
May I, at this point, there wasn't a second to that motion, so if I start back in a second.
Well, I mean, yeah, I don't know that, the, uh, so I, I, so thank, thank you for the clarification, or. He, so counsel person's true indicated that he wanted to make a motion, but wasn't sure if he was gonna make a motion, so I, I'm sorry, if you, if you wanna make that an official motion. No, no, I, I. My suggestion would be that we don't do that, in, you know, it's setting, that we would do that, that you would do that through the interns, um, and take it through that chain again, because like you say, that. Devil isn't detailed, of course, right, and there's a lot, I mean, that's where the.
Well, yeah, I think even when I was speaking this on, I said, it's, it's not an issue that's gonna be resolved, and I say, it's just talking, it's.
Sure.
Get us a, okay.
And, and then I think the process for that, you know, maybe further shade session or something like that, so we can talk a little bit about legal strategy, et cetera. And, and what counsel is willing to, to agree to, so, and then again, it's difficult, litigation is always developing, it's, it's just a part of, part of that process to, uh. Make sure that you're everything, through the proper channels, just get the best you can, all right?
Okay.
Thank you, very nice. Nick, Nick, huh? All right. Counsel, anything else for, um, Ramire or counsel leave on?
Um, well, this is a favor, tree board, um, they finished their strategic planning, um, and they have their, um, meeting this month already. And they, um, pretty much approved the document, it'll be available in June, and it's so that they seem to get some focus, and they're gonna be able to start moving forward on things that they think are supposed to happen. So, I mean, there is, and that's how I think it's a development, and you will pay this one.
Please refer to your work, it's funny, I was, uh, we were watching a park the other day, um, on the park, uh, some of the streets. Now, everybody just kind of finish up there, or you just kind of take a good look at it, it's, it's a beautiful thing, the park's grand, and everybody can go part on that, um. But I remember playing around with the streets about, it doesn't seem, I'm only good at it, thirty, forty feet tall, so, good example of a tree made. Any additional, uh, council reports?
Yeah, our historic preservation board, that's, um, on, on, on the sixth of May, um, we discussed the town hall renovation, so. The plan sets, we needed to, we were, we're out for estimates for the, uh, certain repairs, so we should examine that, or. Uh, TT planning for the historic preservation board's second session is on the second of May. Uh, so we made this plan for all historic buildings in town, um, for, for, it's any final review from KMA Architects, so that we can see that, totally.
So just, by my way, they're, they're finding someone to get the foster repairs, um?
There was a plan set, we definitely knew of the requires for town hall, and that estimate was.
Yeah, that's correct, we're professionally estimating that, so we have real street numbers on town hall.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Let's break some air sunshine, last, um, meeting last Thursday, which went right great, and we're being, uh, trying to see this more.
Mind everybody can go in this on Saturday, ten o'clock, right P M, ten o'clock, uh, or, um, I'm pretty excited, and it's, we're all, we're, we're the young ones that are, man, somebody ever, it's a little crazy, so, um. Definitely, um, spend some time with their families, hopefully, you will be able to send us a video or a dollar, and share what they can about what they're doing. So, you ready to go? Any, any more thoughts? On, Tom, any additional?
Guys, uh, the, I called the coast of the community dinner, lunch, maybe eight, it wasn't as well attended as we hoped, but I think, I suppose, it's just. I don't know, I, it was awesome, yeah, all, you're supposed to pick everybody up, maybe, uh, it's probably still hanging out. It was awesome, I, I like to keep the doors open, put it outside, I'm sending it to my biograph, it was, yes, so, Chikala, Chikala did the barbecue, it was. I would, I would definitely hire him to do everyone's theater barbecue. Appreciate it, it was the, uh, Chikala opened here, uh, it's just, I, I, you can't afford to.
No, okay, do you bring any of that, who can I do this, uh, you mentioned, you forgot that.
That's not me.
All right, I see, uh, so Miss Urbanity Chief and, um, and Robert are, uh, in Washington D C for the National Police Memorial. So, while we can do this, they've been scrolling through the White House, and, uh, I think they're going on a, a tour with the family, uh, with Robbie Stenman tonight to see all the monuments, so. I mean, we wish them all the best, yeah, sure, I have a speech next. Do you have anything from, uh, your projects?
No, I just want to report that we did have a community meeting relative to Lake Street Park, so the next step will be coming back and bringing that to town council for your approval to move forward with that project, so. We'll be working with your schedule shortly for that.
It seemed like it went quite well.
Very well.
I wanted to say something, so, I hope, really, it worked. It was, uh, awesome, the police comes on and hats off to the deputy chief here, he's been, he's been stepping in with no, I mean, he's just awesome, he's, he's got that weight and grace.
Call it, I'll call Dave, John's busy. John, I mean, thank you for your answer.
Yep, all good.
Thank you for correcting me, getting me on the right.
Right.
Water, red river, everybody, so, thank, thank you, uh, and, and, uh, being here tonight. True, I'm gonna say as well as work this through the process, Brad, you as well. D C? Do you have any?
He's so much, no, I think he's gonna do it.
I don't have much. I'll have a couple of things, uh, just, you have to understand that you were currently hiring one new officer who's been creating, still have a lot of position unopened. With now a couple of people, a few, hopefully we'll get somebody hired in the next, uh, couple of months. The golf cart parade that we, um, received, we achieved a golf cart, I don't know if anybody's seen it yet, hasn't wrapped, and, uh, looks what we do, maybe you should drive it first. I'm driving, it's, uh, purpose to ensure you with our staff before we can actually use it, but, we should be seeing about their next, next few events that are coming up, that's the main purpose for it. In the last setting, I don't know if everybody was aware of that, I wasn't invited if we got national campaigns. So, I would be there from July, so, I'm looking forward to it.
Very, very cool, very, it's like a swim.
Hey, I'd be a hundred and four. D C, if you don't mind, with the new officers coming to work, when they do the tires, like, training, doing like.
I hate you tires, no drop.
No, no, I got first dibs, my voice is calm.
For the, um, you know, for myself and the entire town, we, 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 asking, we just, love you, care about you, and, uh, just. We keep all of our people, so, if there's anything that we can do, as the town just does. All right, if there's something else for the good of the order, we will adjourn at eight one o'clock.